I hereby call the Brockton School Committee to order it being Tuesday, 15th of November, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. I'd ask that you please stand and salute our American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Thank you very much, everybody. I need to establish a quorum so the minutes will reflect. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yeah.
Mr. Homer?
Here.
Mrs. Ayers?
Here.
Mrs. Rivas-Mendez?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mrs. Azak?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
The chair is here as well. We've established a quorum. Hearing visitors? Mrs. Campbell, there are no hearing visitors tonight? Okay, I will read into the record. If I can find it. In addition to those attending tonight, again, we're at the Dr. William Arnold Theatre, 135 Belmont Street here in the city of Brockton, 02301. In addition to attending, the public can view this meeting via television on Comcast, Comcast Channel 98 and 1071 HD version, and also online via the following link: www.youtube.com/dbrottonchannels. At this time, we'll go on to Agenda Number Two, which is the consent agenda. We do have A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. Any members of the committee like to take anything out of order? Mrs. Sullivan, please.
D and E, please.
D and E will be taken out separately. Any other members take any other matters out of order? Seeing none, I entertain a motion relative to A, B, C, F, and G.
I'll make a motion to A, B, C, D.
No, no.
Not D.
A, B, C, F, and G. Right. Motion was made by Mr. Sullivan as their second. Mrs. Azak made a second before we take a vote. Let me read that in if I could. A is the approval of the minutes for November 1, 2022, special school committee meeting. B is the approval of the minutes for November 1, 2022, facilities usage and planning subcommittee meeting. C is the approval of minutes October 25, 2022, regular school committee meeting after the request of authorization to submit proposals and expenditure funds. FY 2023 DESI Office for Food Nutrition Programs in the amount of $20,000. College Career Technical Education Unit in the amount of $69,994. FY 2023 Massachusetts Workforce Skills Capital Grant Program in the amount of $75,000. And then the last one is Mass Grant Program for Funding for the Health Assistant Innovation Pathway in the amount of $125,000. And then finally, G is the acceptance of human resource notifications, appointments of certified personnel, appointments of non-certified, and finally, personnel actions, which is leaves of absences, resignations, and retirements. Again, A, B, C, F, and G. There's a motion on the floor. It was properly seconded. All in favor, kindly raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Mrs. Sullivan, D and E, please.
Okay, I would like to call attention to any scholarships. And the first one, D, is the George J. Thomas Senior Memorial Scholarship for $500 for a candidate graduating from Brockton High School and accepted at accredited four-year college or university who has participated in sports and a good academic standing. And I did know Mr. Thomas personally, and I believe it is Superintendent's dad. I didn't know his middle initials, so I wasn't sure if it was him. But I knew George over the years, and he was very devoted to the youth of the city. And he has a sign named after him over at the Baker School. I believe it's a sign.
Field.
Not the field, right? Because the field is a different name.
The field, the baseball field, named after Mr. Thomas.
Oh, I thought it was the whole field. Okay, the whole field, all right. That's great. And I just wanted to recognize that he was very devoted to the youth. And the next one was Bernie Gilmetti Memorial Scholarship in the amount of $1,000 for an applicant that's planning to attend Mass Maritime Academy. And all of these scholarships can be applied for at Brockton High School. The scholarship with Julie Caldwell. Thank you.
We want to thank the Thomas family, the Gilmetti family. I mean, that's a sizable donation for scholarships. And I had the honor of privilege to know Mr. Thomas, just a true gentleman, a true Brocktonian. So we're fortunate to have Superintendent Mike Thomas, but he is who he is because of his mom and dad. So again, thank you, Mike, and your family for this generosity. Any other comments at this time?
So I entertain a motion relative to Agenda Item D and E. Is there a motion on the floor, please?
I make a motion to approve Item D, approval of the George J. Thomas Senior Memorial Scholarship.
What about E?
I make a motion to approve E, the Bernie Gilmetti Memorial Scholarship.
Thank you. Second. Motion was made by Mrs. Sullivan, properly seconded by Mr. Sullivan, relative to Agenda Items D and E. All in favor, kindly raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We will now go on to Agenda Item Four, which is a report of Superintendent of Schools, Mike Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't believe we have a student rep with us tonight, so she'll join us next time. We also will have a rep from the Champion High School joining us. And then the following, the first meeting in January, we'll have a rep from the Edison Academy join us as well. So we'll kind of rotate. All three can come at once if their schedules allow, just so they can give you reports from, you know, our high schools. So I also have the Huntington representative from the Huntington School as well come to make sure the committee gets all our high schools, report on all of them. So we look forward to that. Next, I want to introduce Sergeant Livingston. I don't believe our new lieutenant maker could make it tonight.
No.
Yeah, you can actually sit if you want. Whatever you feel comfortable doing. Sergeant Livingston joined us last year. Thankfully, the chief has kept him with us as an additional commanding officer of school police. As you know, the structure of school police changed back in 2010, where it used to be, when I was actually still at the high school as a dean, the director of operations, the job I went into when I first went to Central, that was the person in charge of the school police. And it was not really a good structure to have. I wouldn't have wanted to been in charge of school police because I'm not a law enforcement official or a supervisor. So the city, I think the mayor was on the council at that time. I think Mr. Sullivan might have been on the school committee. And the city changed to add a lieutenant to then be the commanding officer of school police because people need to understand that the school police officers are fully sworn police officers. So we are fortunate to have a lieutenant and Sergeant Livingston leading the force to ensure its professionalism and to just make sure that all the rules and regulations are followed, and it's been a successful model since 2010. So I commend you and all the school police officers for their leadership, for their work with students, and how they connect with students and build relationships with students because, you know, it's the true meaning of a school. Even though the school police officers are school resource officers for our students. And Mike will talk about some of the things they assist students with. But he's going to introduce who's here tonight, our new school police officers who have just come out of the academy. He'll introduce them and bring them up.
Yes, sir.
So thanks for being here.
No problem. So good evening. My name is Mike Lowenson. I'm Sergeant with the Brockton Police. I've been tasked to be the liaison between the Brockton Police Department and the school department. And I want to thank the school committee, you, Mike, and you, Mayor, for investing in our school police. Brian and I will be the supervisors of the school police. And not only do we want to ensure the safety of our children, we are looking to cultivate a culture of accountability, of trust, empathy, understanding, approachableness. I just made that word up. He does. And that's what our aim is. Because we're not only of the city, we're part of the city. They're very fabric. I think it works well at the school because of many of the teachers. I've either coached with them or just hit them up via email because my daughter just graduated from there. So this is our city. These are our kids. And I want you to understand that that's how we look at these kids. These kids are our kids, my kids. And that energy is going to permeate from me, Brian, on down to our new officers. That's our goal and ambition. And having said that, again, I want to thank you guys for that because you're investing in them and you're investing in our kids. It's like our real infrastructure. So having said that, before I brag on these guys, I do want to introduce some to you. All right? And the first one, don't be shy. You're going to come down here. I'll introduce you with a round of applause. He'll say a quick word about him. Head down, I'll introduce the next one. So the first one I want to really introduce to you is Adilson Mendez, Officer Adilson Mendez. Can I give a round of applause for him? Not too long.
I'll try to keep it short. Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to be here with you guys. I just want to start off by saying thank you so much for having me here. A little bit about myself, born and raised in the city of Brockton, attended all Brockton Public Schools. Proud of that. Went to Bridgewater State University, graduated with a bachelor's in criminal justice. From there, I kept pushing to pursue a career in law enforcement, and boy, it's an honor. And once again, let's say thank you all so much for believing in us and investing in us because it's a true honor to give back to the community I was raised and born in. So thank you guys so much.
Yes.
Brockton High graduate?
Class 2013.
Be prepared for that.
Right around the same year you graduated. 2013.
A little off there. I'm in the high years.
Too soon, right? The next officer I want to introduce is Officer Abraham Nazario, A.J.
How you doing, ladies and gentlemen? My name is Abraham Nazario, a new school police officer. I just want to say I jumped the board. I'm originally from New Bedford, but Brockton gave me a better home, so had to jump the ship on that one. Just a little bit about me, I love giving back to the community. Obviously, that's the main reason we all do this job. I love interacting with the kids. They love interacting with me. I'm just hoping to make a couple differences within the next 32 years. If I can do that, then I'll have made a, you know, a good example of it.
And the next officer I want to introduce is Officer Mark DeVal.
How you all doing? Thank you for having me. I'm very excited to be a new school police officer. Previous to this, I worked five years at the front desk at the high school, and I'm excited to serve the children and the school administration the best way I can in the near future. Thank you.
And last but not least, is Officer Dave Wallant.
Good evening. So I'm Officer Dave Wallant. I am previously from New Bedford. I worked for New Bedford P.D. for a year and a half and in Vermont for three years before that. So I'm not new to this. So I'm looking brand-new to the schools. So we'll see how that goes. Definitely looking forward to working with the kids.
So I wanted to brag on these guys because they graduated around September, and they came to the schools, and they hit the streets running. They first went over to the city side for like eight weeks of training, continued their training, field training, officers, and what they were under. And then they transitioned to the schools. And I'm telling you, it's almost a beautiful thing because as soon as they got there, we had everything that they went into their training, de-escalation, communication, building a rapport with the kids. I mean, I see them do, thinking outside the box, you know, with utilizing the resources, talking to different agencies like the CAC and DCF, all these different things that come into play. And the one major thing is, I don't know if we were ready to transition to Jess, but are we going there yet?
Right, when you're up.
All right, because I feel this would be a perfect transition because just last week, we had two stay-in places. I mean, this is all this training that we do. And for your edification, a stay-in place is when we determine that there's a potential hazard outside the schools. So we secure the facilities, make sure no one comes in, no one goes out. And so authorities determine that the potential hazard has been neutralized. Not to be confused with a lockdown. A lockdown is when it is determined that the security hazard is inside the building. And that's when we, you know, secure in a secure place or evacuate, given the information we have gathered. And that's what all about our Alice system that we have taken in place, and we are certified throughout the city. So that all came into place this whole last week, utilizing the training, utilizing our resources, and everything. And that's why I'm so proud of these guys. I mean, I'm not embarrassing when I say this. I'm very impressed with them and very proud of these guys. I mean, I know these guys are going to give back to our children, to our staff, to each other. So that's, I want to give one more round of applause for them. So I think I've said enough, and I fill out a transition so Jess could come on down and just give us a little bit more detail about how we enact if we have a situation of that nature.
I don't think I'm allowed to follow you anymore. I have to go first next time. Is this on? Okay. All right. This is on. So Sergeant Livingston touched on Alice. Just on background, our schools have been asked to begin lockdown lesson plans prior to Thanksgiving. Every family has been given sufficient notice that this is happening, and they have been given the opportunity to address any concerns they might have with their child's principal. So before we jump in, I'd like to thank a few folks who have been really integral in not only getting Alice training into our schools. This is our fourth school year with Alice, but also making sure our trainings are consistently updated to reflect the latest information. Nancy Leadberg from BPD and Dennis Genich, the director of our wellness department, worked together to write new lesson plans last year based on evolving information that we had available. And then just this year, two weeks ago, Sergeant Livingston helped me to revise the information this year with new information from BPD. Dr. Spalding, Dr. Connors, and Deputy Superintendent Wolder reviewed those lesson plans and provided revisions to ensure the lessons were age-appropriate. And I share this because I think it's important for our families to know that this information is consistently updated. It's not something that we put in place four years ago and forgot about. We update it frequently as new information is available to us. And I think it's also important to note that Alice training is not the only thing that we do when we focus on safety in our school district. And I have a few examples here of other things we do to focus on prevention efforts. We have youth mental health first aid training. In fact, our next training is occurring on November 29th. We sent out that information to staff today. We have incredible mentors, and we invested in new school adjustment counselors over the last few years. We have an anonymous tips program on bpsma.org, and we have wellness curricula that's focused on mental health and violence prevention. But we're here to talk about Alice. So I pulled this screen grab as an excerpt of the book that our students will be reading in elementary schools. The book is entitled, "I'm Not Scared, I'm Prepared Because I Know All About Alice." If a parent who is watching this is interested in reading the book, it's available on Amazon, and there are also multiple read-alouts on YouTube. So ALICE stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate, which as many of you are probably already aware. And basically, the message that we are giving our staff and our students is use the information available to you to determine if it is appropriate to lockdown or to evacuate. And as with every lesson in the Brockton Public Schools, we have objectives. These are objectives that were created by Dennis Genich last year. Students who participate in all of our lessons across the district will be able to explain the elements of the ALICE acronym. They will be able to identify things to do and how to respond in the unlikely event that a dangerous someone is on school grounds. And students will know their rally point. And so since I touched upon rally point, I think this is one of those things that we revised this year. An organized rally point is 100 yards away from the building, and it is the first check-in point where staff would do attendance before being moved to a reunification site, or if safe to do so, return to the classroom. A reunification site is different in that if a reunification site is needed, we would transport students and staff off-site to a secondary location. So when we say a rally point, this is not something that we're sharing publicly. It is something that is intended just for a specific classroom to get all the kids accounted for and to a safe location. So what is new with our lesson plans this year? Basically, the primary change that we made this year was we felt that the grades four to five last year had been reading "I'm Not Scared, I'm Prepared." And we felt that it wasn't necessarily age-appropriate for them. However, the film that grades six through 12 watch was designed by the Walton Police Department, and we didn't feel that that was necessarily appropriate for them either. So Dr. Spalding came up with an excellent idea where students in grades four to five will read "I'm Not Scared, I'm Prepared," and they will assess whether that book accurately prepares students in the younger grades to respond to what is known as a, quote, "dangerous someone" in the book. So I think that's an excellent kind of happy medium. We now have three lesson plans where we previously had two. The other change is that all grade levels will prepare, as I said, their own rally point. Each classroom will have their own rally point. They will not be sharing that publicly. They won't be putting it in classroom newsletters or anything like that, but they will be selecting their own rally point based on their most likely exit from the building. Students in elementary will be taken out to their rally point to see where that is. And in all other grade levels, they will discuss where that location will be. And then again, in all other grade levels, they will, all grade levels, they will be talking about their classrooms and how they might barricade if they were to do so, but they will not actually be going through the process of barricading or hiding or anything like that at this time. And then the last update is we are encouraging, and this was Sergeant Livingston actually tested this with BPD, so it's a great addition. We will be encouraging anyone who needs to contact emergency personnel to text message 911 rather than calling 911 unless they know with absolute certainty that they are in a safe location. And that's it.
Just a couple of things to add as how we do this as a team. Dr. Cobb's has an emergency response team that is now set up. They continuously check doors, windows, to make sure the buildings are secure. We have obviously in-house craftsmen who, if there's an issue with a door or a window that's broken and cannot be locked, they report immediately, even if it's in the middle of the night, to make sure that it's secure. So they're constantly working with the craftsman, but also his team that throughout the day checks doors, checks the back of schools, making sure, you know, doors are not being pegged. You know, our teachers do a great job, and staff, all staff do a great job of making sure doors are not pegged. Principals send reminders about that all the time. But as you know, we have spent, with emergency management money and grants, we've spent thousands of dollars on cameras, on walkie-talkies, where every building has plenty of them, door locks, the most updated and highly recommended door lock systems. We've put in new doors, and the fob system, we've spent a fortune on our fob system. Where not now, in the old days, you used to have keys, and there'd be a ring of keys like this, and everybody had keys to the building. Now it's a fob system where your ID, as you all have, that fobs you in and out, so there's an accurate record of who's coming in and out. We've tried to put as many fobs around buildings to make the convenience for, like where staff park so they can get into that door with a fob, and that eliminates the need for people to have to hold doors open or peg doors open. So we spent a lot of money over the years, over hundreds of thousands in grant money for the fob system, the walkie-talkies. But like Jess said, the most important thing to keep schools safe, the number one, you can have all the door locks and cameras and police officers and security as the materials in place, but if you don't have the relationships, the positive relationships that staff have with the students, that's number one. That's what keeps schools safe the most because it's, you know, encouraging kids to see something and say something. When they have a friend that's in need, or they see somebody struggling with mental health, it's very important that, it's great that our staff has those relationships with students. So there's a trusted adult in the school that a student can go up and talk to a staff member, any staff member, and tell them that there's something wrong. And that's the first line of defense when you're keeping schools safe. So we've spent a lot, I mean, I've been doing this with schools since 2005. I've been to workshops, and school police have trained. The school police, people that, you know, don't know, school police and Brockton Police have put a lot of time and effort, along with the fire department, during vacations, during summer. They go into our different schools and train so they're ready for these situations. All of our police cars and fire department trucks all have fobs on their keychains to all of our buildings so they have quick access to get in if they have to. So these are things that we do constantly, that make sure that we're always updating safety and security plans, and we'll be doing a parent forum shortly after the holidays to just, you know, keep them informed and things that they can help us with. It's an Alice training for them as well. But again, it takes everybody because we can't keep schools safe by ourselves. It's all of us that have to make sure we work together as a team to do it. But I think we've really done a good job in Brockton over the years, and a lot of that has to do with mayor and school committee support. This has always been a top priority for our school committee and our mayor because, you know, we talk about these things when something happens, when there's a shooting at a school and when tragedies happen at a school, it's always on the front page. It stays there maybe for a week, maybe for two weeks, and then the White House will have a town hall meeting about it, and, you know, everybody then will talk about gun control and mental health, and then it goes away until the next tragedy. And we never let it go away. We don't need a tragedy to make us continue to think about school safety because you can't. But unfortunately, that's how our society works. Something happens, stays in the forefront for a couple weeks, and it goes away. But it's our job as leaders to make sure that it can't go away because it always has to be number one. You can't have learning if you don't have a safe environment.
So one thing I want to say is, Mayor, I want to tell you that Mike and the school police and Chief Brenda Perez and Brian Adeli, who is our fire chief, and Steve Hawke, Director of BIMA, everyone is communicating. And Mike sending a text out to all of you, I know that because I'm on it, and I did the same to the city council. So I'll take my mayor hat off and my father hat. I have a daughter that's in one of these schools where we did the stay-in-place. So it's an extremely scary experience. But I can tell you that all the staff at the school, including the principal, is communicating on a regular basis. And my brother is raising his family in Newtown, so we all know what happened in Newtown, Connecticut. So we did not put a price tag on the health and safety of our kids and our staff, and we're going to continue to plan. And unfortunately, in the year 2022, we have to plan for the worst, right? We hope for the best. We have to plan for the worst. I also want to make it clear to people because I think there was some confusion. The PLOF Academy was put the way it was not because there was any incidents on the grounds of the PLOF school. It was on Otter Street, and it was in a proximity. And there's bad things happening right now in the city of Brockton. We have to figure out why there's an uptick in violence. It's not unique to Brockton. It's happening everywhere. But I just want to thank Mike and his leadership team as well, and all the school committee members, because we will continue to work together because this is so important. So we will continue to put money in the budget on the school side and on the city side, but communication is key. So Sergeant Livingston, I want to thank you because you have been running point on this. So thank you, sir. Thank you. Any other comments or questions at this time? Judy, please.
I just wanted to say that I was happy to hear that the kids are going to know what ALICE means and that there's things that the parents can read aloud with them on Amazon and YouTube. And those are really things that kids need to understand, even though it's a very scary thing. And I want to thank the officers and Jess for presenting that because it's so important. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Azak, question, please.
Just a quick comment. So we all take part in the Alice training, all BPS employees. So seeing that, and then, you know... So seeing that, and then, you know, it was a couple of years ago, there was an issue at the high school and I got to see it firsthand and everyone was calm. And our training, having the constant training and the knowledge behind what to do, preparing our staff, makes a big difference when the time comes. You know, people would think that, you know, everyone's running, no, it was calm. Our police officers were doing their job, our staff was doing their job. So as far as training, the more training we can always have, it's always going to help us and help our students and help the families. The one thing, and I was really surprised, so if you text 911 on a cell phone, I'd be curious to see how that would, how that would go.
It does.
Because you know, when you call it, they say you have to say city, state, you know, state, city, things like that. So texting the 911, that's a piece of information that could help people.
So Sergeant, is there a reason that's not like publicized more by emergency management? Because I didn't know that. I mean, I would just call, but I.
No, I'll look into that because obviously we should advertise that, but maybe we're thinking that we don't want to give out that information for bad guys, you know? Maybe they don't know what's happening. I'm just thinking outside the box.
Well, we'll talk to Chief Perez and Sergeant will look into it as well and then we'll report back because I hadn't heard of that before either.
And I just, you know.
It goes right down to Brockton Police Station.
If you're in the, it depends, if you're in that, this area? So even if your cell phone like says it's out of Rochester, it will, if you're in Brockton, it would go, hits the tower, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it pings right here.
Yeah, because I've had to, I think, once maybe just call that, do the 911, but there would be like state, city.
Yeah, no.
And by the time you get through that, it's like, okay. But there was an accident in front of me, so, but that's good to know. Again, we're always learning something, so knowledge is key.
No, it's important because, again, if an intruder's in the building in an area, because our schools are large, and if an intruder comes in across the other side of the school or, you know, and the person sees them right away, they can actually text 911 a lot faster than.
Okay, definitely, thank you. And thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Isaac. Mr. Rodriguez, please.
Mike, I just want to thank you and the fellas for coming down here, introducing yourselves, letting the members know who they are. You know how I feel, Mike, you know how I feel about the school police division also bringing in law enforcement. I think, you know, we have to make as much investment as we can and give them the proper tools to make sure that the students in the city are safe. So thank you, Mike.
I'm sorry, just one last thing to talk about.
Sergeant, you might come up just because BCA is filming this, this will be helpful to viewers.
To remind us this, that we have, I gotta pee right here.
Yeah.
We have two officers in the police academy right now, and they're great guys, Alex Moreta and Astrid Silva. They'll be hitting, graduating March 24th. And then we have another awesome, awesome young man, Randy Jean Lewis. He starts December 5th. I mean, I've already been working with him, put him in the roll calls, this guy's unbelievable. Just goes to our diversity, being able to accommodate our school, and he will be graduating right around May.
Great.
So, and by the end of the school year, the guys that are in right now will be done with field training. Again, I'm telling you, I'm just so appreciative, looking at even Brockton Police, everyone across the states are lacking personnel, but you guys are putting in money, putting your money where your mouth is and really investing in finding good quality people, good quality people. I'm not embellishing this, I'm putting my name on them, you know?
Yeah, and we have, the last several years, made sure, we always look first and foremost residents of the city. Because there's a requirement that you live in the city, but also the diversity and also people that are bilingual, that can actually work with students who speak, you know, English as their second language and also important to connect with the families of multilingual learners as well. So that's been a priority of ours because when I started, there wasn't a case, we didn't have anyone in school police that would, could speak another language. Now we have a few and we, that's how we really look for, we actually advertise a job with a preference on diversity and on speaking, you know, other languages as well. Thank you again, Sergeant. I'm sorry, Mr. Sullivan, please.
Mike Thomas, the superintendent, his first approach to us was those five gallon buckets with all the equipment in them. I just.
I get CNN for that one.
It's all over the country. People picked up on it all over the country. But I just wanted to mention, and I don't know if everybody knows, it was your idea and all those little things that are in there, each, there's a purpose to each one of them.
Right.
And it just was a great idea. Thank you.
Thanks. CNN, huh? And the New York Times. Yes. You've done all this all, huh? Pretty good. Good from Brockton.
He's gonna make a movie.
Yeah, then we have, so I'm going to invite up, any other questions before we move on? We're good, right? I'm going to invite up Dr. James Laboue, Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services. There was a recent change in the discipline law that was put in by the state. Unfortunately, the state didn't go through the Department of Ed to enact this new change. And again, not, we're not adverse to the change, it's just, it's tough to, where it didn't go through the Department of Ed and came right out and it started on November 7th, 8th, November 8th, but we didn't get much notice at all. And we will do it, well, we have, it's a law, so we have to enact it and make sure we follow it, but it was a little frustrating how it came out and how it was just thrown to us pretty much a week before it went into law. And it's very hard to get people trained, especially our administrators, in that short period of time to deal with the new law, to make sure we're following it. And also to do it pretty much two months into the school year without, it just frustrates us that, again, no one's adverse to it, but it's, you know, you like to have time over summer to make sure you have time to train administrators and work with staff, but when you find out the week before that the law's going in place and, you know, I got to give credit to Paige Tobin, our attorney, working with Jamie and Sharon, because it came to them only about 10 days before the law went into place. So it was, kind of came out of nowhere. But it just, so it just, we struggle when things, when you're working on so many other things that they put things in place this late would so less time to train. But again, no one's disputing it, but it's just, would have been nicer if we had more notice and, but I don't think Desi had any notice as well.
No, and the regulations are yet to be released.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you. It's Superintendent Thomas. Good evening, everyone. My goal this evening is to give you a brief overview of the changes that have been made to the Massachusetts discipline regulations. So just for context, there are three major Mass General laws that govern student discipline in public schools. We have MGL Chapter 71, Section 37H. The focus here is on, it addresses the possession of drugs, weapons, or serious assault on school staff. There are no changes, just so we're clear, no changes to 37H. So any, a student who may possess drugs, weapon, or a serious assault on staff, these changes do not impact those infractions. The next major law that governs discipline in public schools is MGL, Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 37H and a half. This permits discipline based on felony charges that have a substantial detrimental effect on the school community. And once again, there are no significant change, there are no changes to this provision of law. What we, where the revisions did occur was in Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 37H and 3/4, which addresses all other forms of discipline other than possession of drugs, weapon, or assault on staff or felony charges. I'll also note that MGL, Chapter 71, Section 84, provides that the conduct that is subject to discipline must be school-related. Okay, so that's just a little context heading into the next, the presentation this evening. In 2022, an act addressing barriers to care for mental health was a bill proposed in the Massachusetts Legislature which affected several laws focusing on access to mental health resources and supports. The focus of the act was on implementing restorative and holistic practices to help children who act out or misbehave. It also sought to address the impact of the school-to-prison pipeline, and it really focused on keeping kids in school. Governor signed the bill on August 10th of this year and it became law on November 8th, 2022. We were made, as Superintendent Thomas mentioned, we were notified the last week of October and were able to pool our resources and train our administrative team on November 2nd, the week prior to the law being implemented. So what changed? The old language under 37H and 3/4 gave a lot of leeway to school decision-makers relative to considering ways to re-engage the student who has misbehaved and to avoid using expulsion as a consequence until everything else has been tried. The new language is far more significant relative to the, what the school must do prior to the imposing of disciplinary sanctions on kids. It establishes that there must be the implementation of school or district-wide models to re-engage students in the learning process, which shall include but not be limited to PBIS models and trauma-sensitive learning models, provided however that these models shall not be considered a direct response to a specific incident. So what that means is the responsibility is on us at the school level to really focus on school culture and climate and not implement these as a response, or in a, in response to a student-specific sort of behavioral presentation. Documentation on the school has increased. We now must document the use and the results of alternative remedies and/or specific reasons why alternative remedies are unsuitable or counterproductive, as well as documenting why the student's continued presence poses a specific documentable concern about the infliction of serious bodily injury or other serious harm upon another student while in, or person while in school. So again, if you were to suspend or remove the child, you would have to document why that was necessary and specifically document the reasons for your concern of the affliction of serious bodily harm. Again, just to be clear, the changes to the regulations, the law rather, allows the student to be suspended if they are unsafe to the school community, but that must be documented and justified to the family. There are a lot of questions, as you can imagine, right, that are still unanswered. Some of them include how many different methods are required, right? How many, how many different things do we have to try before we can impose suspension? How many offenses must be committed prior to suspension? What level of documentation is required? Documentation is mentioned no less than three times in the, in the law, but it's unclear what that means. It's also unclear what counterproductive or unsuitable means relative to law. So we are still waiting on the Department of Elementary and Secondary's Education's regulatory guidance on how to implement that law in schools. Nevertheless, it took effect November 8th of 2022. The good news here relative to implementation is that Brockton, as usual, was on the ball. We were able to pool our resources, have our attorneys join our administrative team, walk our principals, associates, assistants, and central office leadership through these changes. And we have begun to identify and expand the use of practices that are already in our schools that seek to support students before a disciplinary removal. I'll also just remind the committee that the district itself is in the process of developing a multi-tiered system of support focusing on social, emotional, behavioral, and mental health needs of students to try to be more proactive in our provision of supports to our students. In January, we will begin in earnest the training of our building leaders on restorative practices and restorative justice. And I will note that we're, our partner there is with Suffolk University, and in January, they're rolling out a brand-new leadership-focused class, helping our school leaders on implementing and leading the work in their buildings. And I will also note that this is not the first time Brockton has partnered with Suffolk for restorative justice training. We have just over 250 faculty and staff who are already trained in restorative justice. We're also, through partnership with our attorneys, have been working on adjustments to our communications, so those letters that families do receive, to ensure that our communications to students and families regarding their behavior is consistent with the expectations of the law. And at this point, I'm happy to turn it back to Superintendent Thomas and address any questions there might be.
Any questions at this time? Kathy, please.
I know it's probably really hard for you to answer this because you don't really have a lot of answers. So did they give us any idea as to what alternative remedies are?
They did not.
Okay. And does it feel a little bit like the goal is leaning, I just, I feel like because they're using the term bodily harm, there are some situations where students can be completely disruptive in a classroom and not harm, physically harm anyone. And that really limits, I think, administration on being able to handle, like, because that would be the case that I'd want to know, well, what, what would you recommend as an alternative remedy in a situation like that? They're not doing bodily harm, but they're being completely disruptive, implementing learning from the rest of the class type thing. Does it, I mean, does it feel like this is leaning towards physical or, I mean, I just feel like that's confusing to me.
The, the serious bodily harm?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. So remember the intent, right? The intent of the legislature was to keep kids in school.
Yeah.
And was to ensure that we're not removing them without violate, preserving their constitutional rights to education, right?
Gotcha.
So the reality here is as we think it through, we're thoughtful of things like mentor partnerships, we're thoughtful of things like behavioral supports, counseling, programmatic interventions that we can offer kids that are, that are sort of, many of our schools do have. Several of our middle schools have begun talking about alternatives to suspension involving community service, after-school projects, bringing kids in and thinking about discipline differently. And that's really, from the discussions we've been a part of, that was the intent, was to begin to have districts across the state think differently about the way we were approaching discipline. So that that removal, without really focusing on restoring the harm that's been caused to the community, that really needs to become our focus. But in terms of your direct question, it is unclear.
That's what I figured. I do feel, I don't, I do feel, I concur with you in regards to the fact that I don't think with everything that Superintendent Thomas has put into play that we're that far off from what they're asking us to do right now. I don't feel like we're, we have major leaps and bounds to get to where we need to be. Would you agree?
Agreed, yeah. What we're, the growth for us right now is on ensuring that there are equity of opportunity across all of our buildings. So we have really bright spots of things that are happening across our schools, and the goal is to ensure all kids, regardless of what school you enrolled in, have access to all those supports and services.
Fair enough, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions at this time? Cynthia, please.
Is this on?
Yeah, I think it's on, yeah.
Hello? It's not, no.
No?
Sorry. It's just in here. Oh, hey. So why it says on?
It's supposed to be on automatically.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me? Yes, okay. So the question here is, so you made it very clear that you guys had a little bit of time before this law actually went into place. So I just wonder, what was the training like on November 2nd? Because there's a lot of unclear answers. And there's just a lot of, there's more questions than answers from my understanding.
Agreed.
So how did this training look and how did it look if we ourselves are still not understanding the law?
So we, we're unclear on what specific regulate, what the language means. Like what does it mean to, relative to those last questions that we still have? What we, we're not unclear on is the things that we're doing proactively to support kids. So the training consisted of our school attorney, Paige Tobin, being there in person, presenting an overview of our principals, associates, and assistants, as well as our central office staff, allowing a back and forth of questions and answers of things that she felt could, she could defend relative to any questions arose. And then it elicited a lot of discussion of things we're already doing that we had to be thoughtful of documenting better. One of the, the burden on the administrator in the building is documentation. So it wasn't necessarily that we didn't feel like we were doing enough prior to removal, it was the document, the systematic documentation. So how many things you have to try, for example, before you can suspend? And those are the questions that still linger, but not the what, right? So there's also going to be ongoing training as we learn more, so that wasn't the only training that we're going to be doing, it's just the beginning. So that sort of set the stage. We wanted to make sure they were aware prior to November 8th, when the law took effect, that this, so these were substantive changes. And in fact, by that next by that next Monday, or the, the long weekend there, she had sent updated letters to the principals to say, here's where you have to change your documentation, and here's what you have to add in to ensure compliance with the law. But the questions that remain are around things like, how many opportunities do we have to give before we can suspend? How many different things do we have to try? How many times does a student have a disciplinary infraction before you can take a different kind of action? And is it relative to a student or, or unique instances?
Yeah.
Right? So if they're swearing and then hitting and yelling, are those three different things, even if it's the same student? Or, see, those are the, those are the questions that we have.
Yeah, how is that being communicated to the student, right?
Correct.
Because then here says that if the student's unsafe to the school community, then that's where you're allowed to suspend.
Correct.
So then what is the definition of being unsafe?
Correct, we, we don't know.
Okay. So that, and then the other question I had, you may not have the answer to this, but if the state is trying to move to a more restorative, does that mean that they're going to provide more money for PD, for staff, and intervention?
Another unfunded mandate.
I would hope.
Excuse me?
It's another unfunded mandate.
Okay, so it sounds like we can push to that, right, if they're trying to?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And it's also important to, you know, it's a struggle, it's a struggle, and it's first and foremost, a struggle for the staff in the classrooms. They are trying to catch kids up from COVID, you know, accelerate learning, and behaviors have escalated because of the effects of COVID, and there's a lot of disruption, and we know we can't just suspend because that doesn't work either when you just throw kids out of school, but there has to be something we can do to support our staff who are in the classroom every day with very disruptive behavior that is not conducive to a, a learning environment. So if you have one or two students really disrupting the class over and over again, then the parents of those other 23 kids are saying, what are we doing? I can't, my kid can't learn because of these disruptions. So we understand, we have to make sure we continue to put supports in place, but it's a difficult balance, because we know out-of-school suspension doesn't work. All it does is get the kid out of the classroom for two or three days, but then they come back and the behavior's the same. But it's a, it's a tough, this is a tough time for staff in classrooms, because the, you know, the behaviors have escalated, there's more put on them to catch students up from COVID, and I'm not just saying teachers, it's the support staff as well. And so it's, it's a difficult time to, you know, kind of navigate our way through this, knowing that students need all the support they can get with mental health issues and mentoring and all those things we put in place, but we also have to make sure we're supporting our staff that are working with the students every day, because, you know, they're trying to teach 25 students, but also deal with some escalators, escalated behavior. So it's, it's a lot, and we'll continue again to work and, and train, and, but we have to do our best to providing a learning environment for all students, so they have access to the curriculum, because it's our job, but it's, it's, we have to now figure out how to best support our teachers and support staff, how to deal with that in the classroom, and so that's, we'll continue to navigate it, but Cynthia, right, it's, it's one of the unfunded mandates that comes out. None of us, again, are opposed to the changes, as long as it's supporting students, but it would have helped if it came out in a much more planned way, and it would have been supported by some funds for professional development.
One more thing, I think I'm with you, James, in terms of, or not with you, but agree, it feels very corporate.
Yeah.
Okay. It's very corporate in terms of, um...
Is it? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
This is ridiculous.
You got a mic on that thing? Is the mic on there too? So you're close enough.
Okay, yeah. So about the documentation, because, you know, the, the term faculty and staff, this feels very staff-like, very corporatized in terms of, you know, if you're managing a staff of 10 people, the documentation you need to collect for those 10 people, that's a lot. This is a teacher collect, you know, looking to document, if they have a classroom of 25 to 30 students, that's a lot of extra work on them, documentation and just being able, as a justification to either get resources, remove a child, whatever the case may be, it just, it feels like the documentation is what I'm most worried about, only because of the fact that that's what everybody deals with, even outside of the classroom, you know? Like, I just, I don't, I hope we have a plan for that, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Rodriguez, follow by Mr. Sullivan, please.
Thank you for the presentation. I know this is new, but is there any automatics, I mean, let's say, two students get into a fistfight, is there automatic suspension, or is there?
Okay, let's go to mediation before you get to the suspension stage. So as of now, two students get into a fight, we automatically know they get suspended? Is that going to be looked into before you get to, to the suspensions?
I think it, with any discipline application, it depends on sort of past behavior, incidence, if it's the first time, or if this is a repeat offender. But generally speaking, we do try to resolve student conflict. The physical fights, however, disrupt the school, and in fairness, their continued presence could constitute a disruption to the school community, that provision is still preserved there, right? Remember, it doesn't, the, the changes to the law don't speak to those felony charges, drugs, weapons, assault on staff. Student fighting, however, could be interpreted as sort of that physical violence in the school environment that creates an unsafe environment, and the principal still has a discretion to put out, but has to document why the presence of the student continuing to be in the school would be detrimental to the school community. Again, the documentation burden then rises, right, relative to, say, a fight, without mediation or some kind of intervention, they would have to document why that would either not work or be a detriment to the school.
All right, another follow-up question. Students that get obviously suspended when it comes to, you know, the school administrators saying, we're, we're conducting an investigation and what happened, you know, who the perpetrator and how this all came about. Do our administrators get investigative training? And I'm, because in law enforcement, we're geared towards that, so as a parent, if you're telling me that you're investigating this, what background do you have in investigations to actually conduct this to make sure that what happened really happened?
Ironically, interestingly, I should say, the next topic for the assistant principals' training is investigations one-on-one.
Thank you.
Speaking of, it really is, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, like, being one of those former students that got removed from school for getting suspended, as I'm older now, when you look at it, when you remove a child from the school, when you look at home, broken homes, single parents, you get this child that's sitting at home with really nothing to do, because, oh, here's your work, go do it at home, who's there to actually supervise? Or if I get stuck, you know, with reading, or whatever it is, we're actually, I'm glad this is taking place and it's, you know, gone before this, but you're, you're enabling a, a child in an urban community to do whatever, walk out into a community and have the opportunity to get into more trouble in that pipeline to prison. As we all know, I mean, I, I see it every day, because I work in that field, that the population is getting younger and younger and younger. So I'm glad that, you know, some changes are being made, and it's, it's new, and I know, I'm pretty sure they'll be updating us as we go on.
Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Mr. Sullivan, please.
Thank you, nice presentation.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make it clear that this law is not for Brockton only, it's for the entire state.
The entire Commonwealth, yep.
So in other words, Brockton hasn't done anything wrong?
No, no, yep. The state legislature passed the law in August.
So somebody else has done something?
In any other city or town.
It's impacting the 51 municipal houses in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so Beacon Hill, the House and Senate Joint Committee passes the law, signed by Governor Baker. So it, it impacts the whole Commonwealth.
Okay.
There's not one city or town that did one specific thing to make the law change. It was voted on by all the elected officials of Beacon Hill.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions at this time? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. Are there any members of the committee, are there any items to refer to subcommittee at this time? Ms. Azak, the vice chair, please.
Given that we're only a few weeks away before the end of the year?
Yes.
I, I know we had mentioned wrapping up some of the subcommittees that had things that were outstanding, and I know there's a bid review, and then facilities, I believe. Are we also with facilities?
We have to do a building name.
Okay.
I was going to bring that up.
Okay, because we only have a few meetings left, and then come January, it'll be new members?
Yes.
So...
There'll be no, there'll be no members to the...
New, well, to the subcommittees.
Yeah, we don't, new members to the sub, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to reorganize the, the, move them around, so some of the subcom, most, a lot of subcommittees, they will have new members on them.
Right.
So if we can just get those, because we only have a few handful of meetings left.
Yep.
Okay. That was...
Sure.
We talked about reorganization, so when can we put a meeting, when we could talk about that reorganization piece, when it comes to like the committee of the whole and the other things we have talked about prior?
Yeah, we, we could do that. I would tell you, I'm going on my first inaugural trip to Cape Verde, December 1st to the 9th with Bridgewater State, so I will not be here December 1st to the 9th, but, and I'd like to be participating in that meeting, so.
So definitely after the 9th of December?
Yes, like, right after, yeah. What would that fall under, a regular school committee meeting?
Would that be executive session?
We can't go...
No, it wouldn't be executive session, no, it'd just be a regular school committee, we could call it special.
Is that the, I apologize, is that the organization of the subcommittees in, in Harvard? Usually we do that in January. It's not organizational meeting.
We ought to talk about it before that.
But we want to talk about it before, because it's a whole reorganization of how things have been, we talked about this in, in an executive session.
I'll just call it special, I'll work with Melinda, and I'll call special, and meet it, and we'll have, I mean, the general public can come in, it'll be, you know, be a vetting out, and just education and listening and learning, it'll be it, so. We'll figure out a date that, but it will have to be after December 9th, it will be way before the, I think Hanukkah's early this, no, Hanukkah's right near Christmas this year, yeah, so we'll, we'll meet that standard, yep. Yeah, we have time, and we probably should have Peter Mello there, because he would have the city bylaws, and the school, actually, the school committee bylaws to...
Our policies and things like that.
Make sure of that, because there's, if you, if there's changes to be made, you want to just make sure it's not violating the bylaw, because then we'd have to have a policy meeting to change it.
Right.
It's under our authority, but it would be, if you wanted to change something like committees of the whole, and, you know, a lot of it's spelled out by the bylaws, so I would recommend having Peter Mello there to advise the committee to make sure if there's any changes to subcommittees or committees of the whole. When's the regular scheduled meeting? We're able to do...
Six in the 20th.
The 6th and the 20th?
You can't do the 6th.
No.
So it has to be?
13th.
The 13th.
Any objection the 13th, we can book an hour, any objection 13th? We'll just call it special, right?
It's Tuesday, right?
Yeah, special meeting, same time.
Yeah.
We won't be here, we'll be back a little later, but, um, I think, we'll have to confirm. Because of the Christmas concert stuff, we'll have to find out. We might be here. But the 13th, okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure again, so you know if we have to, we have time then to change a policy, so when we do the organizational meeting in January. So what we do is, we'll tend to these days to 13th, and we'll just make sure that number one, Peter Mello can be here, and that it doesn't conflict with anything at Brockton High to support the kids, any playing, any concerts, anything like that.
Yeah, but if it does, yeah, we still have to...
He'll be here. Huh? No, we may want to attend some of those events to support the kids.
Then we can, then we can, we can...
But we'll figure that out, and then just, if we can pencil on the 13th, that'd be really important. Any, anything else that needs to be referred to subcommittee at this time? Seeing that we'll, we'll move on. Any unfinished business, which is agenda five, any unfinished business? Seeing that we'll move on. Any new business, agenda six? Vice chair.
I, I just wanted to just remind everyone, so we've reached out to the adjustment counselors, I've also had Jess Hodges reach out to, and Mr. Snalgrove reach out to our principals. So Crayons to Crayons actually delivered the 1,500 winter coats for us while, while we were at Mask, and so there's a lot of behind-the-scenes, we do need to get these coats out to the families. Believe it or not, out of 1,500 coats, I've only gotten 200 requests. I'm sure it's going to be much higher, because as words getting out, but we have an online form, if you can go on to Brockton Public Schools on the Facebook page, it's, it's a form, you can fill it out, it goes right to Jess Hodges, she gets me the printouts, we're going to start distributing them, I mean, the weather is getting cold, we do have the coats. So it's for Brockton Public Schools families, if there's any leftover, I'll do the best that I can to try to support others, but they were donated for our schools, and if anyone has any questions, you can always reach me at joyceazak@bpsma.org. I have gotten some, some emails, but we do have them, we just, you know, and we're going to do our best to get them out, starting probably next week and then after Thanksgiving, but it's, it's a long process, so the sooner someone, you know, you reach out to us, the sooner we can get them out into the families, into our, our students, there's that, and then Ms. Hayward, could she give us a couple of comments as far as the last week's, also, yeah, I thought that would be, just to go over, a few of us had an opportunity to attend last week's workshop over at Brockton High, so...
Yeah, she asked you to be on the agenda next week, but she can come up.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to put her on the spot, but it was such a wonderful event.
It was such a long haul, so I wanted to wait to put her on the following agenda, because it's, it's been a lot of work by her team, so.
It was a great job, we, we all enjoyed, I walked away with so much information, and it was wonderful, and our, our student ambassadors, that was so impressive, and, you know, we're going to invite them to one of our meetings to have them present, so listening to our students makes a big difference, hearing from them, what they are looking from us, and from, from, you know, their teachers and the staff, it's, it's just teamwork, and that's what's going to get us to all work together. But no, get the mic...
Yeah, I, I think it was a really great day, we had lots of folks in the building, there was enough parking, it all worked out, Mike's, Mike Livingston's folks helped people get in, they didn't ticket us, so I think it all worked out well. I mean, I was really impressed with just the energy, honestly, because I wasn't sure what to expect, because this was our first one in person, last year we did it virtually, and there were lots of smiles, and people were pulling me over, this is the one I'm taking out, this was great, I wish we had more time, and we were wondering if two and a half hours was going to be too much time. In the past, I've done longer ones, but this was our first one, so I was really glad that there was still a hunger to learn more, there was excitement, the pop-up restaurants were a hit, thanks to Dr. Presume, and Lisa Cunningham came through with the sausage guy from Fenway, so that was great. So, I mean, it was a great opportunity for people to experience the food of Brockton as well, Cape Verdean Haitian food, Cape Cod pizza came through, and a bunch of others, and we had some really great sponsors, so it was a really great day, we're all exhausted. I was actually off today and came specifically for this, just to recover and to do some other things that I haven't been able to do over the last few months, but again, and I'm glad that, I think, almost all of you all showed up, I couldn't get to you and see you, but I, I, I think you could feel the energy in the building, and it's really exciting, can't wait till next year.
No, thank you. It was, it was wonderful, thank you. So they'll, they'll have questions when you present, I have some questions, so...
Well, our students here, the same thing.
Yeah, they'll bring Darnell back as well.
Yeah, Darnell, yeah.
They were awesome, I can see them on the committee one day, they were, they were great.
Yeah.
So thank you so much.
Thank you, Renee. Thank you, Renee. Any additional comments? I just had a few. I wanted to thank Mr. Richardson's Government History Class, Y 326 at Brockton High, myself and my chief of staff, Sidney Merrill, spent two hours for two different classes last week, and the kids were phenomenal, I mean, the questions that they asked were unbelievable. And then that segued into a lot of you were there to the Veterans Day Assembly, and I want to thank the staff, I want to thank JROTC, I want to thank Mike and his team, again, it was a hit, right? And then the next day, we did the annual parade, and it wasn't just the JROTC, it was the band that was there as well, I want to thank Dr. Cobb for coordinating that, and, you know, the bus transportation, getting folks there, Major Ads cheerleaders, everybody was there, so that was, that was phenomenal. And then yesterday, Mike and I had our Thanksgiving feast.
Yes.
Yes, at the Pliff Academy.
Yes, at the Pliff Academy with my, 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 my class, sixth grade class. You ate more than me?
I did, yes.
Yes, you ate more than me? Yes. You didn't have any pie?
My wife wondered why I didn't eat dinner last night.
But the last thing I want to share is, again, we have a wonderful new.
And Ms. Burns is here. She actually.
Yes, yes.
She actually puts the whole Veterans Day.
Yes, she does. I haven't seen her back there, I'm sorry. Her teachers, so awesome. They did a great job. So this Saturday, 10:30 AM, let's see, it's the 19th of November, 10:30 to 12:30 in the afternoon, we're doing a final visit of the old high school, which was also Champion, which was also Keith, which was also the on-owned school. So we made a pledge that we were not going to relocate. This, this whole group made that pledge until we found a better location. We found a better location, $3 million, $3.99 million. It's the Champion High School on Summer Streets. It's phenomenal, right? And we're getting the $3.99 reimbursed from the county. We already did our little tour and walking tour with it, with that. So that's great. I just want people to understand that the other pledge I made is to recapture some of the architectural integrity of the existing building. So we are keeping on the West Elm Street side, we're keeping all the granite steps, we're creating the pillars, that door. There's some, some architectural integrity on the building as well. We're keeping some of the bricks to make, there's a peace garden we're doing. It's, it's a solace garden, a peace garden, meditation garden. There's going to be bricks utilized there as well. We're also keeping bricks to give to former students or staff that worked there. So if anybody, I know my father was going because he was a student there, there's a lot of seniors.
I lived at school there. Kindergarten.
You did?
That was the kindergarten.
You was at A2 there though, right?
No.
No, no.
That was the kindergarten, that was the kindergarten center for the whole school.
So I'll keep a brick for you too.
Yeah. So you, if you went to kindergarten, you didn't, they didn't have kindergarten elementary schools, it was all at the Keith Center, half-days. So that's where we.
So you were over there.
Melinda's here with me, just in another class.
Yeah, the Lincoln School.
Yeah, Jared went there. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, the A2 program, yeah. Yeah, no, I wasn't in that. A2 elementary school.
That was the last one.
And no calf and no gym, it was the best school in Brockton. So I'm just going to say this Saturday, if anybody wants to come, please come. It's going to be a great day. We're going to have some food and some drinks and stuff. But, you know, there are some Brocktonians that are very, very upset that it's coming down, but it's a $100 million building that's going to house four departments. And I spent two and a half hours today in Foxborough with police personnel, BIMA, IT and, and fire. And we saw the grand schematic of the new building. It's, it's unbelievable. It's a showpiece. And again, we took three buildings on Highland Street. 9011 is gone already, so it's a full city block. It's, it's great. It's where it should be. Lieutenant Governor Plato was with me yesterday. She came to the Walmart to give additional money to Brockton and I said, keep coming, Karen. And then she wanted to have a beer, a Brockton beer, and I left her there. I had one beer with the LG, but she stayed. But at the end of the day, if anybody wants to join us, 10:30 to 12:00 on Saturday, we would welcome you, we would love to see you. So that was what I would like to say. Yes, vice chair.
Unless it's on your list, Mayor, just a reminder, this is our last meeting before next weekend's parade. So as far as the Veterans Day parade, that turnout was amazing. I've never in all the years seen so many people along the parade lines. And I am hoping, we just need to get the word out and hopefully we have amazing weather, get the families out. And there's so much going on in the city, so, you know, I know Mary Waldron and her team have been posting. So Mayor, I believe it starts early in the morning at City Hall. There's quite a few events starting.
Yep.
Is it at 10:00?
Outside and inside, the garden club's inside, the council agents inside.
Forest of Santa, DJ, Joe, the ball.
Yep, yep.
Food courts.
Food court. Food trucks.
Plantarium show. So it starts in the morning and then the parade, I believe, is 1:00 PM?
Yes.
1:00 PM parade kicks off.
Kickoffs at 1:00. People line up at 12:00.
Okay.
Behind the old Sweeney's, on the old Bat Bus, which is now called Sycamore Grove. And then we will be walking there.